Okay, right, we're ready to rock and roll. Good morning, everybody. My name's James Gibson. I'm Chair of the Licensing Committee. Thank you all for being here today. Can I remind everybody that today's meeting is livestreamed? And we'll go round now and ask members to introduce themselves, please. Let's start from the left. Miss Kate.
Councillor Kate Hague-Farley-Ward.
Hi, good morning, everybody. Councillor Jordan Bowden, Rounday.
Morning, everyone. Councillor Tom Hinchcliffe, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Good morning, everyone. Councillor Sharon Hamilton-Moore-Town-Meadwood Ward.
Good morning. Isaac Wilson, councillor for Wheaton.
Good morning, everybody. Councillor Ali representing Gipton and Hairhills.
Yetso Ed Carlyle for Hunsut Riverside. Welcome all.
Good morning. Jane Senior, councillor for Marley South.
Good morning. Emma Pugsen-Golden for Middleton Park.
Good morning. Councillor Neil Buckley on Woodley Ward.
Good morning. Norma Harrington, councillor for Wetherby Ward. I'm not a member of the Licensing Committee, but I'm a ward councillor.
Good morning. Councillor Dawn Serry-Pudsey Ward.
Good morning. Councillor Rick Downs, Otley and Eden Ward.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Right, so we'll go to officers. Starting with you, please. Rob.
Good morning. My name's Robert Brown. I'm a solicitor in Leeds City Council's legal services and I'm the legal adviser to the Chair today.
Sophie Howard, State Environmental Health, Leeds City Council.
Marlin Nick Gardner, Leeds City Council Traffic Team.
Dave Skupski, Operations Manager for National Highways.
Good morning, all. Dan Tedy, West Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Service.
Morning, all. Dave Gold, West Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Service.
Sinead Howell, Yorkshire Ambulance Service.
Claire Smith, Head of Safety Neighbours and Antisocial Behaviour, Leeds City Council.
Good morning, everybody. John Mulcahy, Chief Officer, Elections and Regulatory. The licensing functions fall under my responsibility.
Good morning, everybody. Matthew Nelson on behalf of Entertainment Licensing.
Nick Ireland, West Yorkshire Police.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Helen Graham-Leclerc for the Committee.
Fantastic, thank you very much. And then if we can have Festival Republic introduce themselves, please. All of the... Just go from left to right, if you don't mind.
Good morning. Andy Pennington, Festival Republic Traffic Coordinator.
Melvin Byrne, Festival Republic.
Georgie Hanahan, Event Manager for Festival Republic.
Hannah Corrigan, Licensing Coordinator for Festival Republic.
Phoebe Close, Sustainability Manager for Festival Republic.
Thank you very much, everybody, and welcome. Welcome. We'll now move to Helen, please, to go through Agenda Items number one to five.
Thank you, Chair. Under Agenda Item number one, there are no appeals against refusal of inspection of documents. Under Agenda Item two, there are no items on the agenda which require the exclusion of the press or the public. However, the Committee will note that the report on item seven, the Leeds Festival, does highlight that members might consider it appropriate to go into for the public to be excluded from part of the meeting where the representatives of Festival Republic and other attendees might want to provide members with information associated with the festival this year, specifically if that information relates to the business affairs of a particular person or the company, or if it relates to any information that might be involved or taken to be proposed to be taken in connection with the prevention or investigation of the crime. So those matters sort of fall under the Access to Information procedural 10.4, three and seven. So at that point in the meeting, I would ask the Committee to consider during discussions whether they need to go into private session and if they do, to resolve to go into private session when they need to. Under Agenda Item number three, there are no late items. Item number four, could I ask members to declare any interests that you might have? And I can't see any. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Helen. Okay. So we'll move to Agenda Item number six, which is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 23rd of May 25. Oh, apologies, sorry.
Sorry, my fault, Chair. Apologies, item five. We've received apologies from Councillor Farley and from Councillor Martin and also from Nicola Raper, the section head of Entertainment Licensing.
Thank you very much. So going back to Agenda Item number six, previous minutes of the meeting held on the 23rd of May 25. But are we all okay to accept those as an accurate record or any matters arising? I'm seeing some nods, so I'll take that as accepted, in which case we shall move on to Agenda Item number seven, which is Leeds Festival 2025. So just before we start, just a reminder to everyone that there may be some issues with the meeting, may need to consider a private session. We've got into a rhythm of always having a private session to discuss issues relating to the prevention of crime. I'm just going to ask members now, are we okay to do that? Are we happy to do that, as we have done for the previous years? In which case I will advise councillors and members of this Licensing Committee to err on the side of caution with questioning that's open to the public. That's not... For obvious reasons, I don't need to go into that. So we'll move now on to officers from Entertainment Licensing team to introduce this item, please.
Thank you, Chair. Ahead of this year's festival, the Committee will lay details on the preparation and planning from Festival Republic, partners of the Safety Advisor Group and Councillor Harrington, who chairs the local Ward and Parish Councillors Working Group, Councillor Robinson. In accordance with the condition attached to the licence, the Committee is also asked to consider the options available on approving this year's event management plan. That condition requires the plan and any revisions to it to be approved by the Licensing Authority and due to its evolving nature, the final version is not normally available until shortly before the event takes place. The options which are available to the Committee are set out on page 11 of the report and are to delegate to the Chief Officer or to the Licensing Subcommittee, subject to feedback from all relevant services. If members are minded to delegate to the Subcommittee, the intention is to list the matter as an item to the existing Subcommittee hearing, which we have scheduled for Tuesday, the 19th of August. And it should be noted that this is an amendment to the report that wrongly specifies the 18th of August. Thank you, Chair.
So let's stick with the format. I propose that we stick with the format that we have done for previous years, which is we allow Festival Public and Melvin and his team to have a presentation. Then we'll go round in turn to each one of the officers of the SAG, who will talk about their area of expertise. We can then put questions to the officers from the SAG and/or Festival Republic at the same time, if there are any issues raised through the questioning of people on the SAG. Does that make sense? Are we happy to crack on with that? Excellent, okay. Melvin, over to you and your team then, please.
Chair, thank you very much. I'll actually hand over straight to Georgie, who will run through the presentation, if that's okay. Thank you.
We're just going to get the volume turned up.
Ah, okay.
There's been a request, Melvin, from this end of the table. If you would like to put your microphone slightly closer to you, that might be better.
I shall ask my Georgie to run through the presentation, Chair, if that's okay.
Is that good? Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Melvin. Thank you all for your time today and for giving us the opportunity to provide an update on our planning and preparations for Leeds Festival 2025. As you can see on the screen, we've done a presentation which I'll talk through now. In terms of our programming for this year, on the Friday, we'll see the likes of... One moment, what, we changed slides? We'll see the likes of Travis Scott, D Block Europe and Sammy Vergey. On the Saturday, Chapel Rhone, Hosea and the Kooks. And Sunday, Bring Me The Horizon, Limp Bizkit and Becky Hill, along with many other artists that you can see on the screen here. In terms of our site plan updates for this year, within the arena, our stages will consist of our main stage, our Chevron, Festival Republic, BBC introduced the new reload stage, as well as seeing the return of our silent disco and introducing silent karaoke within the arena this year, providing customers with a variety of late night entertainment options. Within the campsites, we have transformed our campsites this year, providing a whole new camping experience for our customers, which you can see on the screen here, the locations of some of these campsites. All of our campsites now will have upgraded toilets, more shower facilities, activities and programming such as run clubs and get ready with me stations, where festival goers can go and do their makeup and their hair and get ready for the day before they head into the arena. Our new campsites this year include the Fields, which is our classic Leeds main camp, with anyone who has a weekend ticket having access to the Fields. The Meadow, which is our eco camp this year, where like-minded people who pledge to keep the campsite tidy and take their tents home. The Garden, which is our calm camp, which is replacing our quiet camp from last year. This is a laid-back spot for anyone who wants a bit more of a relaxed environment. The Glitterball Grove, which is a welcoming space for festival goers who want to camp with a supportive and like-minded community, as well as the Valley, which is our solo camp for people who are attending the festival by themselves or in a pair, who would like to meet new people. The Meadow, Garden, Glitterball Grove and the Valley are all registered campsites, where customers will need to be registered to gain access and they'll have a separate wristband for these entry points. Our late night entertainment within our campsites, again this year, will include LS23 and Piccadilly Party, as per previous years. In terms of fire safety, Rapid Fire are our fire safety provider who are returning from last year and we will continue to have a ban on campfires and barbecues. In terms of medical, our medical provider Elite EMS are returning again for 2025, providing 24-hour medical provision throughout the event, with X-ray facilities being on-site again and staffed by a reporting radiologist. In terms of wellbeing and safeguarding, what was previously referred to and signposted as welfare will now be identified as wellbeing at Leeds Festival. This decision was informed from the outcome of a successful focus group that was held by Festival Republic and FACT on the Lookout for Each Other campaign, where persons within our target demographic identified with the term wellbeing rather than welfare, and that's why we've implemented that change this year. Our wellbeing provider, I think, are returning for 2025, as well as our safeguarding coordinators, providing a 24-hour coverage. The sensory space will again be available within the arena, operated by Diverse UK, providing a safe and quiet space for anyone that just wants a break from the hustle and bustle of the festival. This year, we will see the return of charities and organisations, including Festival Angels, who are providing roaming teams, a safe space hub, a prayer cafe and lost property services. Can everyone still hear me? Is that going here? Okay, thanks. Oxfam, who is a charity that's tackling poverty, raising money for their cause with an engagement space in the event. Ford Leeds will return, who provide drug and alcohol support services. Samaritans, providing mental health and suicide prevention support services. The Salvation Army, providing homelessness, employment support and youth groups. And Narcotics Anonymous and Alcoholics Anonymous, providing drug and support and alcohol support, facilitating two daily meetings a day. In terms of our resources that are focused on the prevention of violence against women and girls and providing support to victims of violence against women and girls, on-site we will have the return of SAC, which is the Sexual Assault Referral Centre in conjunction with the West Yorkshire Police. Safe Gigs for Women, who are promoting female safety and raising awareness of unwanted detention at gigs. Safer Spaces, who are new this year, who are working to prevent domestic abuse and sexual violence against women and girls at festivals and events through education, training and immediate support services. They will have an engagement space on-site, as well as outreach teams. And Stamp Out Spiking, who will also be on-site this year, who are educating the dangers... Educating our customers on the dangers of spiking and offering effective and practical solutions to keep people safe. They will have an engagement space on-site and will also be providing cup and can covers to our customers. In terms of our safety messaging and our campaigns, the safety and wellbeing of our patrons and staff is paramount and in 2025, we are promoting safety messages and campaigns, both in the lead-up to and during the event. These include the continuation of the Lookout for Each Other campaign, promoting safety around drugs and alcohol consent and keeping an eye out for one another. This is created in consultation with FACT, who are the Festival Advice Campaign Team. Dan Byrne unfortunately couldn't attend today and he would like for me to share some information regarding Lookout for Each Other campaign, which includes that the campaign will be shown through onstage screen messaging throughout the event, on our social media platforms, as well as through the Festival app, being able to push notifications to our customers and on-site signage, including at our air hubs and on our LED signs. And we'll also have the hashtag shown in all of our air hubs, on merchandise, on temporary tattoos, our main stage screens, as well as our festival poster. We will have our Violence Against Women and Girls Prevention Campaign continuing this year, educating both staff and festival goers on what to look out for in a victim, what to look out for in a perpetrator and how to safely intervene. Ask for Angela, a phrase used by patrons to indicate to staff that they need help or feel unsafe, and these posters will be located in the toilets and at our bars. And our Modern Slavery campaign, aiming to reduce labour exploitation, providing information on how to get help and these will be located in our staff areas. In terms of our air hubs and our Get Ready With Me stations, these are returning in 2025, our assistance information response hubs, and they're providing information, support and signposting to welfare facilities on-site. This year, we will also have our Get Ready With Me stations staffed by our community groups and charities, providing the same support. These will be staffed this year by Festival Angels, Age UK, Andy's Man Club and S Safe, and we will have nine air hubs and Get Ready With Me stations in the campsites, providing 24-hour support services, as well as one within our arena. In terms of alcohol management, we will continue to do ID checks at the bars in 2025, with Central Fusion returning as our bars and food management operator. Capturing data of ages 16 and 17-year-olds through our QR code system will continue in 2025 and this data will be shared at our daily SAG meetings on-site. In terms of our security and stewarding, security working groups have continued this year, where we meet with our security companies as a group, provide regular event updates and briefings. PNC checks will also be undertaken again this year, with SIA licence checks administered by the SIA, and our enhanced drug detection operations and tiger teams are continuing this year. In regards to sustainability, as mentioned previously, our eco campsite is returning this year, now named as The Meadow, with 20% of our campers electing to camp in The Meadow this year. Music declares emergency and Climate Live are also returning this year, with Music declares emergency running their No Music on a Dead Planet campaign, with messaging across festival screens throughout the event, as well as Climate Live bringing their solar-powered bus stage, with talks from youth climate activists and educating people with the Climate Live movement, and they will also be running activities within The Meadow campsite. We will have additional recycling points this year and operating a three-bin system. We will also be having recycle to win initiatives this year, involving our green team and air hubs, rewarding those that are seen actively recycling, as well as our take-at-home rewards, providing festival goers with rewards when seen taking their tent home. Our deposit return scheme is operating again this year, as well as our salvage operation. We had a very successful salvage focus group meeting between Festival Public and salvage groups and individuals, where constructive feedback was received on how we can improve our operation overall, and this is taken on board and we are working on amending those. This was a really positive collaboration between Festival Public and these organisations, which we aim to continue to develop. In terms of noise management and environmental health, again, off-site noise monitoring will continue to take place in surrounding villages. Our letter to residents is scheduled to be distributed and the local resident website is now live, along with our resident hotline. Our water safety management plan is the same provision as 2024, with frequent water testing occurring during the build and event phase, as well as our food safety and independent EHOs, same operation as 2024. In terms of our traffic management, successful traffic management was... Our plan was implemented in 2024, which we will be continuing this year, with National Highways continuing to be responsible for junction 44 during egress, as well as having enhanced signage in surrounding areas. As I'm sure we're all aware, there are roadworks currently on the A1M and we have had continuous consultation through our traffic Subcommittee meeting and the main contractor, and will continue to do so in the lead-up to the event, as well as during the event, with our signage plan being adapted to this. In terms of our pick-up and drop-off, hackney carriage, Uber and private vehicle hire, this will again be managed by event people on-site this year, with additional welfare and internet provisions in place for 2025, and our safety messaging for taxi and private vehicle hire customers are in place again for this year. In terms of signage orientation and information, there's multiple forms in which we can communicate to our customers and our staff on-site, and this is utilized both in the pre-event planning phase, as well as during the event. This includes on-site signage such as LED signs, our VMS, as well as our A-frames and Corax signs, our help maps, which show locations of medical and welfare services, as well as UI here maps to assist with wayfinding, our Festival app, where we also have the ability to send push notifications, and our social media and website, where our social media team are on-site, continuously monitoring our feeds and with the ability to post safeguarding messages in real time, as well as on our sage screens and through our PA and our pre-event emails to our ticket holders. In terms of further planning and preparations, we are holding our tabletop exercise tomorrow, with our final EMP submission on Friday, the 15th of August, and our councillor's site visit on Tuesday, the 19th of August, which I believe has been sent out for invitation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much. Very thorough presentation. Members, any questions, please? Councillor Buckley.
It's something which is not... It hasn't been mentioned this morning, but I wonder if I can refer to all the publicity that's been about certain bands, like Kneecap and Bob Villain and people like this. And I just wondered what the arrangements were to prevent any chanting of hatred lyrics or violent lyrics, and if it did happen, what steps would be taken?
Councillor, I don't vet the lyrics. I don't vet what they say. I have no intention of vetting the lyrics or vetting what they say. I will take action against artists that break the law.
Sorry, I didn't actually hear that properly.
Apologies. Can you hear me now? Councillor, I said that I don't vet the lyrics, I don't vet what artists say, but I will take action against those that break the law.
Any other questions, members? Yes, Councillor Ali.
Georgie, thank you for the update and also the extra provision you've put in. You've touched upon wellbeing and safeguarding. Last year, it was flagged up regarding the queuing of the taxi area, the lighting of the taxi area, inside and outside, and there was no water provision, people were passing out. So you've talked about wellbeing and safeguarding and you've updated stuff and you've added. I want to know what has been implemented in that area, please.
Thank you, Councillor Ali. We will have food and water provision in the taxi area, as well as in our pick-up and drop-off area this year, as well as increased lighting, that was also implemented last year as well, as well as having additional resource in those areas to manage the crowd.
So Georgie, what's... My other question is regarding lighting. So people were walking on to the dual carriageway outside, there is no lighting, so I'm just asking a question regarding lighting. You might have sufficient lighting where the queuing is happening, but what's happening with the lighting outside, where people are then just wandering in and out of the dual carriageway, up and down it, please?
Councillor Ali, if people are walking on the dual carriageway, they are not walking on our land. We would be discouraging people walking on the dual carriageway, but we're not in the business of lighting the dual carriageway in the anticipation that people will do so.
So if festival goers are walking on highways, what systems have you got in place to stop them from the queuing area, to just walk off that? Have you got systems in place to stop that?
No, of course not. We would discourage people, but we cannot stop people moving about freely on public spaces and we wouldn't try to prevent people leaving the site. Of course, we wouldn't. We would discourage them from walking on dangerous places, but we've got no intention of holding people and not allowing them to enter a public highway. Of course, we wouldn't do that.
So Melvin, has there been a risk assessment done regarding this? And if not, why not? And is this something that's waiting to happen, that's going to wake us all up, because there's no lighting?
Yeah, I'm not going to light the A64, Councillor Ali. That is not going to happen. And... But yes, of course, we risk assess it and we discourage people from doing so, but people walk back to Bramham, people walk back to Thorne, for example, along the... Not the highway, but along the local roads, and we can't prevent them from doing that. They are entitled to do that. We do risk assess it and we do discourage it, but no, we can't... We can't prevent them walking onto the public highway. We can't prevent them, for instance, coming out of the, you know, the yellow bus station and walking into Bramham to go and get a pint of beer, for instance, and we wouldn't... You know, we wouldn't seek to do that.
But what, you know, Nick might be best placed to... I don't know if Nick's got something to say on this as well, since it's National Highways. Okay, all right, that's fine.
So Melvin, you're saying that you risk assess it. So if you've risk assessed it for the last two years, three years, four years, where are you pointing or scoring at this? Has it increased in the risk factor or has it stayed the same? And if that data is available, I would like to see that data for the last five years, if you have risk assessed it.
There are security on all the gates that lead from the public highway onto the festival site and therefore from the festival site onto the public highway. We, as I say, we discourage people walking onto public highways, particularly at night, but at all times, if there are not pavements there, and there are no pavements on any of the roads adjacent to Bramham Park. So yes, we do assess it. The risk hasn't changed at all, from the day that we went into Bramham to the day today, because, you know, it would have changed if pavements had been suspended or, you know, installed, for instance, but nothing has changed at all, Councillor Ali. It's not a common thing. It's pretty common between Bramham and the festival site and Thorne and the festival site, but it's not a particularly common thing on the A64. Again, although there are one or two local villagers that do take the opportunity to cross the A64 and walk across the A64 and come direct onto the land in order to shorten their journey, et cetera. But it's not a particular... It hasn't been identified as a particular risk, other than by ourselves. by ourselves in discouraging people from doing that.
Thank you both. I'm going to invite Nick and Nick, we've got Nick from National Highways, isn't it, Nick? Traffic team, and then Nick Ireland from West Yorkshire, please, might be able to add some clarity, if you do have anything to add, please do.
Not really, I mean, we're not aware that there's a demand for pedestrians to walk down York Road, therefore it's not part of any traffic management plan to provide anything there. I think what was being suggested about putting lights down there, we're only maybe encouraging that, so it doesn't take place at the moment. Pick-up and drop-off is on the site and that's where the pedestrian should be, so I'm not aware that that's an issue. However, if it is flagged up as an issue, we can maybe look at what needs to be done for future events, but I'm not aware it's an issue for this event that's just come in.
Well done, Nick.
Yeah, cheers, thank you. I've covered the event for the last three years, this will be my fourth year. I've certainly noticed across the last two years a significant reduction in the people egressing the site out onto the A64 and seeking to make their way home down that route. That's, I believe that reduction's been brought about by the improved shuttle service, shuttle bus service, the arrangements and the management of the pick-up/drop-off area and the taxi area, and sometimes there are difficulties down there. Last year, I think it's fair to say with the weather conditions, there was issues with the internet, the wifi reception and what have you, and people getting the taxis. But we're talking probably about a dozen people trying to make their way out. We use a power of persuasion, we're limited into, police resources that are external to the site and that are on the A64, so we can use cord and work to try and keep people safe, but essentially, as has been said already, if people are not going about their behaviour in a disorderly manner and are wanting to walk down the road, actual powers to stop and prevent them are very limited. But it is a threat that has reduced over the last few years because of the other methods of getting people off the site that have improved, I believe.
Short question councillor Ali, yes?
For highways, Nick, so you've got a slip road that the taxis are using, you had-
Is relating to what you've already asked?
Yes.
Specifically, yeah?
Yeah, yeah, so it's regarding, so highways control the flow on the slip road for the taxis to come in. So you had record number of taxis waiting there, because the individuals that were waiting in the compound for too long, then they were just walking onto the road. So you've had record number of taxis on the slip road, so the slip road was not capable of actually the demand of, or the traffic flow was to maximum capacity or beyond. So it was not fit for purpose, and that led to individuals then walking onto the road in a way. So I'm trying to understand, so you've got a traffic management system in place that's been there for three years, four years, five years, and has not been reviewed, so yet you've had record number of taxis that wanted to get to this queuing area, but they couldn't because of the slip road.
Can you confirm which slip road you're referring to, please?
So Georgie, we'll probably have, because we've had those meetings where that slip road has come up, I can't remember exactly, I've got the notes that I've taken, unfortunately I don't have that information on hand.
Are you referring to the one on the A1M? Okay.
Is that the hard shoulder running roof?
Is it with McQueen in?
Yes.
Yeah councillor, in relation to the traffic management arrangements at junction 44 and off the A1M, there is a lane that free flows from the A1M northbound exit slip road onto the A64 west, and it's clearly signed that that lane is for pick-up and drop-off for the festival site. During the egress operation on a Sunday night last year, there were periods where we had to hold lane two on the slip road that joins the roundabout in order to get other traffic from other approaches going onto the A64. There were some taxi, private hire vehicles that were held and waiting in lane two on the roundabout for a period of time, but that was partly because they weren't using the free-flow lane. The free-flow lane, which is signed, continued to flow throughout the night from the A1M onto the A64 and into the pick-up and drop-off site. So we are enhancing, working with Festival Republic to enhance the signage for that this year to make sure, and we'd encourage everybody to follow the pick-up and drop-off signs to make sure they're in the right line to get to the pick-up and drop-off area. And just in relation to sort of pedestrians and walking back, certainly on the Sunday night, which I oversaw last year, there was only one group of people, about five people, right at the end of the night who'd walked up the A64 into the roundabout, and they remained there, they didn't go anywhere else.
What we're going to do next councillor Ali, after we've had questions for Festival Republic, we will go around and there'll be opportunity to ask individual officers. Okay, councillor Carlisle, please?
Not so much a question as a note of thanks really, we might come on to it more later, but just, there's been lots of conversation on this committee about salvage and innovation to reduce waste, some of us have had some really good dialogue, I'm really pleased to see the direct dialogue between the volunteers and between your team, and I just, yeah, I feel things are really going in the right direction, so the proof will be in the pudding and I hope we can build on it year on year, but just a note that I feel that's going in a really good direction.
Thanks Ed for the positive comments, it's very useful. Councillor Downs, please.
Thanks Chair, a few little things. One is, I'd just like to echo what councillor Carlisle has said there, and it's nice to see that the eco campsite's up to 20%, and long may that continue to grow. One question I'd like to ask, and it slipped my memory whether this is provided or not, but you mentioned things like Ask for Angela and anti-spiking and all these positive campaigns, and I just wonder, do we normally get a report back as to how many people have used those facilities, and like you've got availability of spike testing kits? I think it'd be useful, if it isn't already, and pardon my ignorance if it is, but when we have our debrief in January, whether we can have a report back on those to see how effective those campaigns are, so we can see that going forward. The other little point I just wanted to make was, and it's in response to councillor Ali's point, and it's that near where I live, there's Golden Acre Park, and there are big signs up from the council saying, no access, do not cross the A660, and there are signs there, and every day I see people ignoring the signs, there's an underpass that they can use which will safely take them across. Festival Republic could, for example, be asked to put up a sign saying, do not walk along, or we advise you not to walk along, but it will be ignored, which is a sad fact of people's sort of assessment of risk, but they're adults, they've got to make their own risk assessment, and I understand your point, but I think I agree with Festival Republic. So there's just one real question in all of that.
Thank you councillor. Yes, in terms of the statistics from our safeguarding organisations and charities on-site, we do collect that data, and I'm more than happy to provide that in the debrief at the end of the year.
Councillor Hague, then, please.
Thank you. And one thing that's changed, I suppose, from Leeds City Council's perspective this year is that we now have a requirement on Hackney carriage drivers to take card payments, which was not the case last year, and I know I and other members of the committee raised kinds of concerns about people needing to bring cash onto a cashless site in order to ensure they could do that. So are you promoting that message to your customers that they should be able to not need to bring cash onto the site in order to be able to use taxis?
Yes, that information is on our website, that they are now taking card.
Excellent, very good point councillor Hague. Councillor Harrington, then, please.
Thank you Chair, this referring back to the traffic management plan, and Andy will be really happy that I'm going to ask this question. There are some issues, and it may well help with councillor Ali's question as well about people walking off the site, because we've obviously been working very hard with Thorne in particular about trying to make sure that the traffic management plan works for them, especially with the A1M1 roadworks, which is causing an additional problem this year. So could you maybe just outline what the proposals are for that management plan, which means that there's more people using the shuttle buses and less likelihood of people getting frustrated and leaving the site early? Thank you.
Thank you councillor. I think just to cover a couple of points, just regards the A64, if I may. We work in conjunction with the local pub, the Fox and Grapes, we actually extinguish their lights so that it's less of a draw for people to walk off the site to that location to try and get a taxi or to get picked up there, because our primary zone is the pick-up and drop-off and taxi area, and we also work very hard with the red bus lay-by, with the proprietors of that facility there to make sure that that is also not a draw for people walking off-site to go to that location, and that is work that's been conducted over the last three, four years in order to minimise the reasons for people to walk away from our site, along with a lot of work to make the pick-up/drop-off and taxi operation as efficient as it possibly can. Obviously, as councillor has mentioned, it's down to human nature, which we have to manage as well. So in relation to the movement, the mass movement of people, which the shuttle bus service manages, that's into the thousands of people each day and in a very efficient manner, and we have looked at the operation for the shuttle buses this year, given the impact of the works on the network, the A1M. So we've looked, worked with the company providing the shuttle bus service and looked at alternate routes for them to approach and leave the site, and rather than utilising the A1M as their primary route, we're going to look at an alternate routing from Leeds using the A64, the new E-law and the A58 to bring those buses to and from site with customers on. And then we are asking for the understanding of Thorne Village that we will bring empty shuttle buses back to site on a night to expedite egress through Thorne Village. It cuts approximately 30 minutes off the journey time, and that is for a very limited period, about an hour, just to bring the final required buses back to site. So we start on-site with our full bus complement at 9pm, ready for egress, they can take mass numbers away from site, and then a very few buses are required to come back from Leeds to site to finish the operation, and with the understanding of Thorne Village, we bring them through just to expedite that, because the risk factor for people walking out en masse has been shown many years ago to be thornier, and we've eradicated that through the protection systems that we put in for Thorne Village, which is the closures and the efficient manner of the shuttle bus service. So we've looked at that this year, risk assessed it, and come to a reviewed plan, which is for this year only due to the network problems, and then we will review it post-event and speak with local councillors and parish councillors to see whether there's further improvements that we can make, but we are continually looking at how we can improve things, and that will be assessed and changed daily if there is the requirement for it.
Great, thanks for that, to Andy, anything else? No? Any other questions for Festival Republic councillors? No? In which case, I have a few. We've worked with you very closely over the years, it comes around very quickly, doesn't it, this meeting, you know, it really does? There's been quite a few things that we've asked of you that you've worked with us on in the past, I sort of asked our entertainment licensing team to put together a bit of a list. Now, a lot of these were addressed in the presentation, but I just want to just confirm and go through the list, so bear with me, and I apologise to everyone at home that's going to sit through this list. A ban on all campfires still in place? You can just nod, yeah? Introduction of Challenge 25? Yeah, I need you to nod if that's the case, though, yeah?
Sorry Chair.
No, it's an introduction of Challenge 21.
It says Challenge 25 in the paper, so I wonder what's happened there? Matthew, have a look into that for me whilst I go through the rest of the list, please?
Yeah, we'll do.
Yep. Professional security and stewarding, particularly in campsites, to areas to improve public engagement, we've said yes to that. Enhance search procedures and monitoring. Now, I think when we go into closed session, we'll go into more detail, obviously we did a lot of work on that back in 2023, 24, so it'll be good to go over some of those again and make sure that we've got exactly the same standards in place when we go into closed session. I presume that we do on the, you know, in the round, yeah, we can say that? So the SIA, the enhanced information sharing with the SIA, yeah? We've already heard definitely there's an onsite x-ray this year. Improved traffic management, we've heard a lot about traffic management already, including using the E-law, so I think we can definitely say that that's happening. Introduction of resident liaison officers through the villages of Thorne and Aberford? Yeah, yeah. Introduction of subgroups to focus on safeguarding sustainability and traffic and taxis. Now, I know that we've got sustainability, traffic and taxis, because I've sit on those myself, safeguarding, do we have a safeguarding subgroup? Yeah? Okay, at this point then, I just want to raise, there was a question, I'm sure we've seen the email, members will have seen the email that came in recently, it was addressed to all members on the committee, as well as a number of MPs from both the Reading area, Leeds, and councillors are sitting on Reading Council on licensing, I'm sure you can remember that email. There was a suggestion in there around charities specifically who are involved with tackling violence against women and girls and rape and sexual assault, the suggestion was that they should sit on the SAG. Now, I've since had clarification, I will be writing to the person that emailed in to say that it would be, we can't, charities can't sit on the SAG, it's for blue light organisations to sit on the SAG, but there is an opportunity for charities pertaining to the issues that I've already raised to sit on the safeguarding subgroup. Are members okay with put that forward? Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure everybody else will be, if anybody has any concerns about that, then please raise them, but I just wanted to bring that up. Improve lighting and directional signage within the site, yeah, including at the taxi ranks as well. Implementation of environmental and sustainability campaigns, we've heard a lot about that, including engagement that councillor Carlisle's already mentioned with regards to the salvage operation. Introduction and increasing the popularity of co-camping, yeah? How many people access that now? Just out of interest, I'm sure you did mention it in the presentation.
Access the new campsite provisions?
The eco, what we used to be the eco campsite, it's called something else now, isn't it?
It's about 20% of the camping audience will be in the eco campsites, and around 50% of the camping audience, including the eco, will be in the new bespoke campsites.
Festival app, featuring interactive site map. A system to identify the number of 16, 17-year-olds and 16 and 17-year-olds in attendance, that was something that we'd worked on very closely with you over the years, is that the same system that we'd agreed's still in place? Yeah? And I'm confident that that was robust and accurate. Air hubs are still there, lookout for each other, we've heard still there, festivals' advice team, Leeds City Council, Forward Leeds Festival and Festival Republic, I don't know what that means. Safety measuring for customers using taxis, private hire vehicles, of the dangers of using an unbooked vehicle, what are we doing, any awareness campaigns around that? So applying for hire?
Yes, we'll have onsite signage regarding that.
And the taxis are still, the taxis, not the private hire, are still in the first cage, aren't they? So, yeah?
Yes Chair.
Excellent. Welfare stations available within and outside the main arena. Excellent. Welfare stations available within and outside the main arena. We've heard about those. Includes the enhanced offer now as well. Support and education with particular focus on intervention and prevention from organisations such as, and we've heard all of this, Alcoholics Anonymous, Asper Angela, Enough campaign, Safe Gigs for Women, Brook Consent messaging, the egalitarian anti-spiking and Forward Leeds. I don't know if some of those have dropped out, but there is an enhanced offer from what you've said in the presentation.
Yes, that's correct.
And the availability of spiking test kits, are they still available for people?
Yes, Chair.
Guys, that's my checklist to go through, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware that everything that we have asked for you over the years, asked, is still in place. Okay. I'll tell you what, we'll have a five-minute break, and then we'll go through all the offices. Thank you. Sorry. Matthew, can you clarify the Challenge 25?
Yeah, I've just been looking through previous notes from meetings, and I don't know if in 2024 you did operate Challenge 25. No. But having a look at the event management plan for this year, it does specify Challenge 21, which is satisfactory. It's a suitable proof-of-age scheme.
I mean, if members have a problem with that, we can discuss it going after the break. If it's a real issue and want to insist on Challenge 25. But I think, Matthew, maybe when we come to you, you can advise whether that Challenge 25 is necessary or not. And I think, well, you've already clarified that, really. So with that in mind, we will have a five-minute break now. Okay? Okay, welcome back, everybody. Thank you. Firstly, on the Challenge 25 issue or query, Matthew's kindly had a look into that. Would you like to just explain what's happened, please?
Yes, of course. Thank you, Chair. Looking back through meeting notes, there was a proposal for Challenge 25. However, on reviewing it, it was identified that there may be an increased possibility that people aged between 21 and 25 who forget their ID, for example, may be refused a sale and may turn to other substances. So Challenge 21 is a recognised proof-of-age scheme, as is Challenge 25, and both are seen as satisfactory.
Thank you very much. That satisfy the committee? Okay. Somebody put their hand up there. No? In which case, councillor Harrington, if you'd like to start.
Thank you, Chair. Just to say, really, that I co-chair with councillor Matthew Robinson from Harewood Ward the working group which liaises with Festival Republic on behalf of parish councils that are affected by Leeds Fest. So we have worked incredibly hard, and I know it has been, the last meeting was a little bit tetchy, and it was mainly to do with the roadworks issue, which is why I asked the question that I did previously. But just to say, really, that the number of issues that are raised at those workshop meetings have reduced steadily year on year since we started it just before Covid. So the work that Festival Republic has put into that, and all the agencies that we deal with at that, we thank you very much for that, from the residents of the areas that we are living in and that are affected over that weekend by Leeds Fest. But just to say, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that, councillor Harrington. Hannah, you wanted to clarify a point that I raised with regards to attendance, or who currently attends the subgroups for safeguarding.
Yeah, it was just to say that the current charities are invited to the subcommittee, and that includes the SAC, Safe Gigs for Women, Stamp Out Spiking and Safer Spaces already are invited to join that meeting, so.
Of course, that offer would extend to any other charities that would like to attend. So if there are any charities listening and would like to attend, please do get in touch. Okay. We'll move to, we'll just go around in order. Rather than going around the order on my sheet, we'll just go around order who's sitting at the table. So Sophie, it's actually you first. If you've got anything to add, please. Everybody can please say where they're from as well, if that's okay, before they start.
Sophie Hardy, State Environmental Health, Leeds City Council. Nothing to comment on, really. Just the documentation produced is always to a high standard. We have a good working relationship with yourselves. We, as a team, are always on-site in the build-up.
Sophie, what team, sorry?
Environmental Health.
Okay, thank you.
We are on-site in the build-up and during the event as well. Thank you.
Any questions, members would like to put to environmental health? No? In which case, Nick, please, from Highways.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, Nick Gardner from the traffic team. I'll just touch on what the councillor said there about the working group meetings. I go to those, and they have been very good in helping organise the festival and give people somewhere to raise their issues, often about traffic stuff. The particular issue you said about signage and the roadworks, we're going to make sure that the signage is aligned, the national highway signs, that it's very clear, so there's no confused messages. I'll keep the traffic planning really short. It's basically the same as last year's. It's been recognised that it works very well in that it uses E-law as a natural diversion around the site, and it allows a long closure eastbound of York Road for Festival Republic to use to filter traffic into the site. There's no major deviations from that this year. We've also, we've had some liaison with the taxi trade as well about some of the facilities in town that we're looking to work on, which have been successful. So it's all good from my point of view.
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, somebody did get in contact with me, actually, about Sovereign Street. Wanted to see whether it's going to be, the upgrade will be completed. The other thing is about the layout. So apparently, we've sort of got buses in the middle and then taxis at the top, taxis at the bottom, which seems a bit odd, when it should be all the taxis and then the buses at the bottom, perhaps?
Yeah, that is noted. It's a temporary arrangement that we've used. We use it for some of the larger events, that bus people onto an off-site. I have stressed to the taxi trade, there's no loss in there, curbside parking. It allows one extra bus into the bus bay, which is more efficient and able to get more people to the site and back again. We are, in the background, working on a permanent solution for that location, which we are liaising with the taxi trade, which should be beneficial to them.
So for taxi trade, so what are the arrangements for this festival? Are they going to be the arrangements that are currently in place with the buses in the middle and the taxis either side?
Well, the current arrangement is that there's a coach bay, and then behind that there's a taxi bay. What we're going to do is, we're going to slightly extend the coach bay into the taxi bay. That loss of taxi bay is going to be moved to the front of it, where there's some loading. It's outside weather. I think it's North Bar there. I can't remember the name of the bar. And they have that, which is the same taxi provision, but it's split. But it allows the coach bay to work more efficiently, and that it can get an extra bus in. And it would hopefully reduce the issues between the coach drivers and the taxi drivers.
And you're happy to meet with the taxi drivers and go through all of that? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions for Nick? Councillor Ali?
Nick, you've started your conversation saying that you haven't deviated from the programme that you've had always in place. Yet Chair has raised regarding Sovereign Street, and you've said you've made a temporary arrangement. I've not finished yet. So you've disturbed something here that's been working and is structural. You keep going on back to signage, and here you've done a temporary, where you're going to go to a permanent solution. And I'm not quite understanding that, whether you understand that it's a structural problem and it's not a signage problem. And you've here have done a temporary fix on Sovereign Street to elevate that problem or to look at it. But in the process, what you've done is you've split the taxi rank. So what consideration was taken into account? And you've started the conversation by saying, Nick, that you haven't deviated from what works. Obviously, you have. And signage is not the answer, because this is what you've done regarding structure. Could I have an update on that?
The traffic management for the event hasn't changed. That's at the site and the surrounding area. The issues with Sovereign Street, we've been liaising with taxi trade representatives with regards to other events where we're with regards to other events where we use, where Sovereign Street gets used heavily for buses and an agreement was made with them about how we could make it better and we've carried that same agreement forward to this event. Unfortunately, we can't deliver a permanent order overnight, it takes time. So in the timeframe we were working on, we couldn't deliver a permanent order but they're also aware of that permanent order and I believe are in support of it. So that is what we've brought forward for this event because it worked okay when we had events at Temple News and that also have high numbers of buses. So it was done to alleviate issues by the increased use of buses competing with the taxis.
So if this was done with the trade, so why are the trade then not with it? Because what I'm getting is that they are saying that this was enforced upon them. So there's two different variations Nick here, that you're saying that the trade was for it, yet the trade is saying that there was very little, but they were invited to meetings regarding Sovereign Street but it was carried out how you wanted to do it.
No, because it was carried out after meetings, after they agreed it. And I've got emails to that, if you want to see them. You know, we're not forcing anything on anybody here, obviously. And I've had many emails to and back from with a regard in it.
Okay, I think we're still, it's something that's still being worked on and needs to be continued to work on. I think there had been agreements to the effect, but I think there has been since some concern raised over future plans that I think need, just need ironing out. But you've agreed to a meeting, you've agreed to meet with the representatives from the trades, so that needs to be ironed out in that meeting.
We will always meet them.
Yeah, fine. Any other questions for Nick please? No, okay, in which case we move on to Dave from National Highways.
Thank you Chair, Dave Skupski from National Highways. As has been said already, our involvement in the traffic management plan is essentially a repeat of last year. The main difference this year is the roadworks that are taking place on the A1M where we're currently upgrading the central reservation barrier. We did engage with Festival Republic prior to those works, sort of starting during the planning stage where we reviewed the traffic management plans for the roadworks and whether we would be able to continue to run the same traffic management plan in conjunction with those works. We established that we could, there are some challenges in relation to placement of signage on the motorway but the traffic management provider for Festival Republic have been meeting with our traffic management provider and there is a solution in place. So there is essentially no change from our perspective for this year. There is the potential for delays over the bank holiday weekend, depending on what the weather is like, other events going on and how many people travel due to the reduced capacity that there will be in that very busy section. We are aware that there have been frustrations from local residents, particularly sort of in the Aberford area during the construction period where people are diverting through Aberford Village. But the standing arrangements that we have for the festival period and closing the road at Aberford should mean that that issue isn't present during the festival period.
Thank you very much Dave, any questions for National Highways? No, thank you very much. And Nick, did I say thank you to you for your, thank you, didn't, I think we just sort of went off on a bit of a tangent but thanks for answering those questions and for all your hard work. We've got Dan, is it Dan and Dave, are you together? Excellent.
Thank you Chair, Dan Terry, West Yorkshire Fire Service and my colleague David Good. Yes, so I'm new to the department, so I wasn't here last year but David was. But it's pleasing to note that there was no mobilisations from West Yorkshire Fire to the actual site last year. Any minor, small fires were dealt with very rapidly by the camp staff. This was mainly down to the excellent CCTV and security provisions in place. These fires were dealt with very quickly before even the onsite rapid fire team arrived, I'm led to believe, which is excellent. And continuing on that positive trend this year, in the build-up to the event, we've had many multiple meetings with Festival Republic and Rapid Fire, the onsite fire team this year. We're going to be attending the tabletop tomorrow as well and then we've got a further meeting with yourself and your traffic manager to discuss anything that we flag up regarding any blue light attendance during the surrounding areas, during any rail closures, that sort of thing. For our prevention side and Festival Republic, we've built this good positive interaction relationship we've got going on based on previous years and it's pleasing to see that you've once again banned campfires and barbecues. Whether that has a full effect, as I say last year, apparently you had a number of small fires. And thankfully, recent ban on single-use vapors, that's going to alleviate quite a large risk of fire for us and the onsite fire teams. With regard to the response then, we've had positive meetings with Festival Republic and Rapid Fire again as I said. We've had discussions regarding the reduced attendance this year of festival goers, which has resulted in a reduction in the fire cover provided. However, that still falls in with the guidelines of the Purple Guide. They've kindly offered us a place in event control for the weekend, which we've gratefully accepted and we will have an officer present Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That provides a positive for us, as in we get to liaise with the other onsite partners there and also it benefits Fire Service that if anything's needed where we do need to attend, we've got a first eyes-on vision of what's going on, we get a good situational awareness and we can liaise with our own fire control to ensure that we get the right resources that are needed should it escalate beyond Rapid Fire's capabilities. And also with that, it also creates a smooth transition through the security barriers, which I think we've had an issue with in the past for any oncoming appliances. Other than that, there's nothing further from us, thank you.
That's great, thank you both very much. Any questions? No, very good, excellent, thank you very much Dave and Dan, Sinead please.
Sinead Howell, Yorkshire Ambulance Service. So from YASS's point of view, we've worked with the LEED TMS for a number of years now and the event last year had no impact on Yorkshire Ambulance Service at all. There was no call-outs that we needed to attend. That's down to the medical cover being in line with guidance, the x-ray facilities on-site and a very good drug policy that they have on-site as well. Off-site transport is provided, which negates the impact on Yorkshire Ambulance Service needing to attend the site. YASS will be in attendance in the event control during the peak hours, so that's between 8am and 4am. A YASS ambulance liaises and officer will be present, but outside of those hours there is a direct number provided for our control room, if there is a requirement for YASS to attend. And then an element that came up in the SAG last week was around understanding the mapping of the medics on-site. So the team are currently undertaking a dot matrix scenario where they're going to map where all the medics are on-site to make sure that we can get to all elements of the site in a timely fashion and they're working on a five-minute timeframe.
Any questions members? I have a question with regard, so to the medical provider. Is it still the same medical provider that you've used yet? Because there was a change wasn't there and then we're back to who we've used last, who you used last year. They have the right arrangements with the hospital, so if they transport people they can get straight, get access into A&E or something along those lines? I can't remember exactly from last year.
Yeah, so it's around the x-ray and facilities and things like that. Otherwise, they are triaged through the system and things like that. It's just the ambulance door, they'll come to the same one as Yorkshire Ambulance Service. So if we've got a critical patient, it's just triaged by the hospital.
So without being all over the detail, it's the same arrangements as last year? Yeah, great, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, great, thank you Sinead. Whoever got next, I'm sorry.
Hi, Claire Smith, Head of Safety and Neighbourhoods and Antisocial Behaviour for Leeds City Council and I'm here today from a community safety aspect. So nothing to really add, it's just really positive to see about the safety messaging and the campaigns that have been supported. So I don't actually have any resources on-site on the day, but any follow-up work that's required with the Yorkshire Police post-event, we will be following that up.
Thank you Claire, any questions? Thank you. I've got on my list now John and Matthew but that's not right, so, yeah, go on.
Richard Perrott from Taxi and Private Air Licensing in Leeds. The operation for the Taxi and Private Hire service in the festival this year remained the same as last year. Last year it was extremely positive and seemed to work quite well. We will have enforcement officers attending each day of the event and we will also be working in partnership with the local authorities, neighbouring local authorities as we are aware that there will be licensed vehicles from other licensed areas working at the event. So we will have them officers available throughout the duration.
Thanks Richard, any questions for Taxi and Private Air Licensing? Yes, okay.
Just to pick up on the point about people not bringing cash. If licensed vehicles are there from other areas, is that still a requirement they should take part?
All of the Leeds hackney carriages that will be attending there will now be required to take cash or card payment. Other vehicles that are booked, they will be pre-booked by the people attending the festival therefore they will have arrangements in place to take the money at that time.
Great. Okay, Matthew, is there anything you want to add?
I mean, there's very little for me to add, I mean, some of the points that were raised last year, some of them which were admittedly out of the control of Festival Republic due to the impact of Storm Lilia. They've been touched on this year through various meetings and being addressed. Probably the most notable one is improved wifi through the site and in particular in the taxi area, which Festival Republic have committed to. And again, last year that was impacted by the storm. And in terms of us as a service, we will have officers available during show days on the site, thank you.
Anything for Entertainment Licensing? Okay, Nick, so I suggest, well I'll put it to the committee that you can give a short update now and then we could move into closed session if there's any questions that members would like to ask that we don't feel would be appropriate for the public, is everybody in agreement with that approach? Yeah, so, you know, leave it to your discretion Nick.
Thank you. So Nick Ireland, West Yorkshire Police. The policing response to the event has been to set up a command structure, as is usual, would be expected. Strategical, tactical and operational commanders oversee this event, building a threat assessment and then operational delivery plans for all the resources that are required. The tactical and operational commanders are supported by advisers, accredited public order, public safety advisers and will be at the event. So the tactical commanders, myself, I will cover the night shift, my colleague Dan Wood will cover the day shift. There'll be 24-hour coverage co-located on-site. We build our threat assessment from looking at all the information, intelligence from things that include, but not limited to the debris from last year, other events, similar events that are already ongoing nationally through the country, regional, national, local intelligence. And information from Festival Republic through all the different planning meetings that have been going on over preceding months already, including ticket sales, which acts are coming, what their event management plan looks like. And we build our threat assessment around that to deliver a proportionate policing response. And that response includes some uniformed resources around the outside of the event space, some specialist crime resources, including investigators, liaison officers, digital investigators. There's a roads policing response to mitigate the threat of disruption. That also includes an AMPR operation, which is the automatic number plate recognition, so that we can monitor who's coming into the surrounding area and might be attending the event. We support through intelligence checks, vetting checks of all staff that are operating in the event space on behalf of Festival Republic. That information is passed to us on the preceding weeks and months and will continue right the way up to and through the event. And we have some specialist resources as well present at the site should there be a serious threat that unfolds there. All that review and the threat assessment continues during the event and after it as well, so that we are responsive to any changes in circumstances. I'll wait for any questions, I haven't got anything further to add specifically at this point.
Any questions at this point or would you like to just move straight into private session? Yeah, okay, let's do that then please, Hannah. Okay, let's do that then please.
Okay, thank you everyone for your time today and for a really informative and very thorough meeting. We take this meeting very, very seriously and give it the utmost consideration. And we've shown that today with the line of questioning and you can tell that everybody had read their packs. And thank you very much to all the officers as well for all your contributions into Festival Republic for continuing to work with us and putting on a good festival, quite frankly. Just so if there is anybody in the public watching, just to say that in closed session we talked about violence against women and girls and the additional work that's being carried out by Festival Republic and the police to look at and deal with that issue, including promoting reporting of any crimes against women. We also discussed security, including what provisions in place to stop contraband such as any weapons or drugs from entering the festival. And I think the committee was satisfied at the additional measures that have gone in place even since the festival and last year and the year before where we put in really stringent measures. So thank you everyone for your work on that. Now, we are moving on to the recommendations which is turning, if members turn to page 11. We have three options here, option A, sorry B, C and D. Ordinarily, we move for option B, which is to delegate approval for the final event management plan to the chief officer elections and regulatory. We do have the option to delegate that decision to a licensing subcommittee which would convene on the 18th of August. I'll just simply put that to the vote. All those in favour for option B please? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, oh it's everyone. Okay, that's, we have a consensus of all members voting for option B's and therefore I don't need to vote on option C. So thank you again everybody for your attendance, all your hard work. The agenda item number eight is the time of the next committee meeting which is Monday the 18th of August at 10am to discuss the Rounday Park item. Thank you very much everybody and have a great day.